Where are we gonna put that?
Is the space scale building be attached to that?
Everything's on it.
Right now?
Uh, does, yeah, I guess, well, who's left to sign it?
Just Steve and Lori.
Steve and Lori, okay. I've already signed it, so.
We accepted it back two months.
Yeah. Um, but there were no changes.
No, just clearing up some agreements on language.
Mm-hmm.
Sentences had to be right.
I'm sorry.
Um.
Could we get a copy of that?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Under number nine, there are no committee reports for this evening. And number 10 is taken off the agenda until, uh, the next meeting. Okay, approval of the minutes. From September 22. I didn't see anything there that needed amending, so I'm happy with them. If anyone's happy, uh, I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes of September 22nd.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of September 22nd.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor? Looks like 4-0.
Communications, I have one. Dear Bill, thank you for the opportunity to work with the Baileyville School Board. If we can be of any help in the future, please don't hesitate to call. Sincerely, Connie Brown. I'll under that in.
Um, she's coming again, I assume?
Uh, whenever you're ready for it, yeah.
Yeah, um. If possible, maybe if she could arrange to be here a little longer next time?
Yeah.
It looked like she was in a hurry after about an hour or so. Um, but if she can afford more time, we'd appreciate it.
Let's get the other end to decide what we wanted to cover and then probably let her call at seven o'clock.
Yeah, sounds good.
It'll probably be after the convention. I'm sure she's probably tied up for that right now.
Okay, item number six, public participation. Does anyone have any comments about anything that's on the agenda?
She doesn't have an agenda. It's on it.
Um, maybe we should have some extra copies, Bill, at the meetings, set on the end of the table?
Yeah.
And so that people can see what we're talking about.
Oh, okay, there's a clean one.
Progress also.
Can I make a comment about the co-curricular that was discussed last week?
You certainly can.
Okay. Um. You said too that we could talk to the teachers and stuff like that, so went ahead and got some info. Um, I got 11 people from the elementary school. How many teachers do you have all together? But they all said no. They didn't approve of the new co-curricular hiring policy. Um, high school wasn't able to get as many because unfortunately I have to work. Uh, three, one said yes, two said no to the curriculum, and three didn't want to get involved. So I know you said the majority wanted this change, so I was just curious where the majority came from.
I think the majority of the board wanted it changed.
So that teachers don't count?
Uh, that's not on the agenda tonight. We can, it'll be up at a different time if you wanna. Anyone else?
The only thing I have with the public comments is sometimes I don't really know if I have a comment 'cause I don't know what everything means and I don't know if I'm the only one, so are we? I just want clarification, so if I do have a question later on, I can ask it or I'm just not sure.
Right, well.
So I don't always know what these topics are gonna consist of, so I don't know if I have a comment.
Right, we just changed this like, um, four weeks ago.
I was here for that.
Yeah.
But I've just.
And, uh, I, as you've witnessed, um, we have the public participation, but I also continue to allow people to speak during the course of the meeting, but that's our, that's our prerogative, our decision to do that. There may come a time when, you know, if we gotta build a heavy agenda and some, you know, a lot of issues to discuss, then, you know, we're not gonna take any time for, you know, public comment just to, so we don't have to spend all night here. But, uh, for the most part, um, I think people will be able to make comments, um, most of the time.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah, yeah. Anyone else? Okay. Item number seven, the expenditure report.
Yeah, first of all, I do my superintendent's report and then the expenditure report.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Obviously, I've got summer maintenance still on there. Just a reminder that students are still doing a fantastic job and things really look good. I've gotten some pretty positive comments back, most recently on conditions available, so that's really good news. Targeted solutions training appears to be going very well. We've got some staff that do not have access on a regular basis to computers. Some who are not quite as computer literate, we're gonna work with those people on the 13th to try and finish those training jobs. Student enrollments, as you've seen, are pretty much stable enough, just a little bit. Talking with real estate agencies, they've been showing houses left and right, so maybe there'll be some significant changes as we go forward. You all are aware of the conference coming up in October and we've got our delegate assembly. Paving costs, you'll note that we were able to pay a little bit more paving costs, drops significantly. Oil's down, so we're able to at least coat the rest of it. Probably isn't a thick coating, but it certainly cleans it out and makes it look better. We'll have it lying probably within the next week. We'll be setting up to do that. Truck is actually in Machias. We're waiting for them to finish prepping it. And interestingly enough, it has to come here on a car carrier and be delivered to 63 Broadway is the way they work. Uh, we can't just go down and pick it up, which is kind of foolish, but that's the way it is. And so I expect it any day, just as soon as they have it finished trucking forward down there and inspect it. The test results have been released. You'll see, you've got those in your packets. Principals will go over those tonight. And it does give us some general information on some patterns and so on, but we can make some comments about that. Expenditure report is in your packet as well. September, as you know, marks the first quarter, first three months of our fiscal year. And that would represent 25% of the fiscal year gone by, 75% of the fiscal year left. Those are easy percentages. Uh, all accounts are the lines expected, except for those ones that would be annual payments, i.e. duties, insurance payments, those one-time payments for the, uh, other payments that come periodically throughout the year. Grants have been completed. GT grant is due this time and that's gone in and where Jane has in her report, obviously, that she's got that, has been to the conference and hopefully things are going along fine. As far as our total fund balance checking, total budget was $3,716,553. Expenditure today was $557,646.02. Remaining balance is $3,128,906.98 or 84.18%, putting us a little ahead of or behind, whichever way we look at that, what we might expect to be. But as we move along, some months obviously have three payrolls, some months have two payrolls. There's two months in a year that have three, we make 26, so it varies a little bit based on payroll, but that's where we're at. It's in good shape. Couple other real quick things I have for you. I'm gonna pass those down. The Gaines School Boards Association provides a school board insurance when you're involved in school board business. You're covered. If you could complete those for me, you can have the second page for yourself. First page, I'll need that signed and you can do now or just drop them off at the office sometime. And if you haven't gotten it, I have copies of the clinics, yeah, I put that right there. Copies of the clinics, um, it'll be, if you don't have one, I've got extra copies. And last but not least, I think it was in your packet, you've got the draft proposals for blood resolutions. Nothing huge in there, but certainly if you have any comments, I'm sure it's one of those. Certainly make sure that your voice gets heard at the meeting. That's all I got.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Uh, related to the paving costs.
Yeah.
What we did in June, um, could I have an amount of what we paid?
Yeah.
Or, uh, I know we had same holes in the parking lot.
Yeah, those were some short things that had to be done in order to prep for this.
Yeah.
And I have a question about the origin, what accounts or how we paid for that in June?
In June, we paid out of the same account, just, it was debited against that account. Had to pay it, obviously, at that point, against the loan account.
Okay, so it would've been part of the loan?
Yes.
That's what was my question.
Yes, that's all part of that.
Yeah, that's part.
That was all paid in part. Paying that there, yeah.
Because I know that man would not wanna wait three months for his money.
No, he couldn't wait three months for his money.
And could we have, um, an exact accounting of what we've, out of the, it was 150 our loan?
Yes.
And exactly what we've used?
Okay.
Out of that? I know we don't have a truck yet, but we know what it's gonna cost.
Yeah.
And I have a question. In the budget paper, there was, how much are we paying our long-term sub for art?
It'll be the base salary.
Okay, 'cause I noticed in the budget that there was 18,000 something for gifted and talented, 350 for supplies and 300 for travel.
Right.
So I understand those, but I was just wondering where the 18,000 went.
Oh, that goes, that's part of her salary.
Okay.
Correct, yeah. So it leaves a 12 based on, uh, on our side.
And do we, do insurance cost the long-term subs?
Oh, no, not for long-term subs, but we've actually hired her.
Clarification.
Yeah.
Is she base salary or is she on a long-term sub salary?
She's on a long.
Is there a difference?
Yeah, it's not different. After two weeks, you go on.
But she doesn't get these insurance benefits?
Correct, right. Without insurance.
And our base is about 30-something.
Yeah, I'd have to look to be exact. If I pulled the number off my head, I'd be wrong.
It's 30 a couple of years ago. It's probably around 30 now.
Yeah, I'm gonna guess. I don't know. I do too. I've got it at my office, but I.
And I left at home, too.
She do the art classes for the junior high as well?
Any more questions? You done, Bill?
I'm done.
Sweet.
One poll we got.
Okay, next is administrative reports. Patty, you wanna go first?
Just a few things that weren't on my report that I just wanna talk about for a second. You wanted a report out on how the probationary period went for students that got a fresh start. You had 10 students who took advantage of the fresh start and you had three students who were not successful of those 10.
Meaning the three that were unsuccessful, what happened?
Did not have passing grades at their four-week mark, so they're no longer on the teams.
Right. Oh, this is all sport-related?
Co-curricular.
Co-curricular related.
In any activity.
Okay.
Co-curricular, extra-curricular related, closing policy.
At what point was that?
At what point?
Yeah.
Four weeks.
Four weeks.
Um, I don't know if you just wanna put this on a agenda in the future, but, um, in the past, the school boards, some school board members have donated their stipends to Jeanne Sperren Scholarship. I just need to know if that's gonna happen this year so that we can get it out there on the scholarship list.
Do we get paid?
I don't know how you guys wanna handle that.
Think we oughta give ourselves a raise. I took, I took mine last year because Ryan wanted to go to camp, but.
It, it doesn't matter either way. We give a thousand dollar scholarship in memory of Jeanne Sperren.
What is our stipend? Okay, don't, can't be much.
It isn't much. I believe it's $10 a year. Yeah, I can have you to person supplement.
300 if you're chair, chairperson. 300, if you're chairperson.
Kinda gotta decide as a group, you know, how to do that, whether you guys, you guys gotta decide that. I just need to know the answer, okay? So we're gonna decide that. Um, and I just, Gwen, if you're going to that conference, you're going to that school board conference, I'm not trying to tell you what to do, but anything that you could find on proficiency-based to educate, help educate the board in what that is and how that works.
There's two or three of them.
I think would be a real plus.
There's three of us going.
Because we're gonna be coming in front of you guys probably next meeting, the senior board, because of policies for proficiency-based.
I think where there's three of us going, I think we were.
Oh, I didn't know three of us going. I thought you split.
But we're gonna split, so, not, two of us are in the same. We're gonna split it up so that we all get something different.
Try to cover as much as possible.
So that there's no duplication.
Yeah, anything, any education you can give yourselves on proficiency-based would be essential to what you're gonna be working with for the next six months.
I spoke to Will Tool, his representative, um, at the harvest fair the other day and, um, he told me that he has submitted to those representatives a bill, um, that, uh, has to do with the state of Maine setting their own proficiency standards.
We do set ours.
Rather than going the way a common core. And I asked him to let, let me know as soon as that went before the House so that people here would know.
My best guess is there's no way that's gonna pass. We're entrenched in the common core. Our proficiency-based system is entrenched in the common core and the main learning results.
He's entrenched.
And the common core, I know it's getting a lot of grief and everything, but it's no different than the main learning results. It's just rigorous. That's, that's really the only difference between the common core and the main learning results. I attached my test scores. I also, um, attached, I know I've given this to you probably a couple of times before, the proficiency-based component standards and the main law and the way that that reads. So just so that you have a heads-up that, um, we now only have three years of science. We have to have four years of science. Um, we just, um, put in a mandatory year of foreign language for all students that we didn't have prior to this year that needs to be in there. So things are gonna need to change in the way, um, we use our staff is gonna need to change because we're going to be asking them to do more with less people. And also, you'll notice that it's mandatory that we, um, meet the standards of the performance indicators. And we haven't even started the work on that. Don't even know how to do that. So I am, the teachers are participating in a lot of professional development this year that will all be proficiency-based. What else do I have in there? Camp, we have Lucy and Monday Tuesday, great program. They brought the, um, the wall with them. It was really nice for the kids. The freshmen and sophomores went to a college spirit at WCCC. We've got Triumph coming up. Grades closed. Actually, grades were released today for the first progress report. Um, October 13th, we have Judy Ednright coming to be with us for our workshop day and we're going to work on our mission and expectations and beliefs about learning as they compare to proficiency-based learning. Test report. I think you guys did.
Yeah, we did.
So if you look at the grade seven math and the grade, the grade seven math, you'll see that anything in blue or pink symbolizes the level of proficiency that students have.
Yeah.
These colors don't work for me.
He's colorblind.
Well, if you look at the next page, it will tell you the percentage of words on colors. And it also shows you the count of students. And I also wrote at the end what the state's percentage is compared to our percentage. We, we did the same thing with the eighth grade scores in ELA and math. You really cannot get any information from these scores. The state will not give us any. In fact, I ran an article off of the DOE today, but I forgot to copy it for you, where the state basically says, "We can tell you what they did compared to the state and we think they did a lot better than we thought they were gonna do, but they tell you nothing." When we compared the eighth grade scores with their kneecap scores of last year and the 11th grade scores with the SAT scores of last year, they were very different. Kids that never met, met on this test, their, their, their standard was, their, I felt that they scored kids high when the kids actually weren't that high. I felt that they scored kids a lot higher than what they actually were because we found those kids in the past to not, not meet those standards. So I, I can't, I, I really can't tell you anything. I do know that we're seeing a switch over. For years, our reading and writing scores were taking a downward slide and math was going up. And in the last two years, we've seen math go down and reading and writing go up. So I don't know. Um, we've had a lot of turnover in math. That could be, um, some of it. I know when Ms. Thompson is here, she spent hours upon hours drilling kids for the SAT, so that could be part of it. So those scores are what they are. Um, I really cannot say to you that we learned this or that or where our kids were good or where they weren't good based on these scores.
This was, this was last year's kids, right? These are, tests were taken.
Right. The other thing you gotta know, when you look at a small group of anywhere from 18 to 22 kids, when you go to the percentage side, one child represents 5%. In, in all of these tests, it doesn't matter where we are.
I think we had one where one child was 16%.
And so when you look at the number or percentage of proficient versus not meeting proficiency, realize that you move one, or one scored, missed one question, which dropped them below a proficiency or partially proficiency rating, that was a 5% impact. And it might've been a single question. We have no way from the results they gave us to check that back like we did with the MEAs.
And we were happy with our scores.
Yeah.
I mean, if they were realistic, those would've been, you know, very nice scores.
Yeah.
Um, we did see in the 11th grade, the math, um, decline, but I will tell you that the state, in about mid, in about mid to late March, the state came out and said, "This test will no longer be given and it will not count." And our 11th graders were just beginning their math assessments when that news broke.
Yeah.
So we all know how hard they tried, some of it. Um, the science test, you, that is, um, I feel that those scores are a true reflection of where we are in our science. This test has been given for years. It's the same science test, it's the MEA test. We're not happy with our, um, our high school scores, our, our, no, our high school scores were one, which one was it? Okay. The eighth grade, we had, um, 61% that were proficient or partially proficient. And the high school had 83 that were proficient or partially proficient. So we're, we're gaining. We don't have as many that are substantially below proficient. They're getting up into the partially proficient area, but we'd like to see them up in the proficient area.
Patty, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And we, um, as we go into looking at a fourth year of science and the science teachers looking at standards and power standards, they are looking at the places where kids score the lowest and that will be their power standards. Yes, sir.
The, the state figures that you have to the right, that's the state average?
Yes. That's the state average of how many students met, um, like, if you look at grade seven ELA, proficient with distinction, we had 26% of our students were proficient with distinction. Um, the state had 13% that were proficient with distinction at that grade level. But I'm, I'm, I'm telling you, don't put a lot of power in this because they're not valid. Those are not valid scores. For some of our kids, they probably are very valid. The students that take, take learning and testing very seriously, um, they probably are valid scores for them, but even them, personally, I know that some of these kids that are our higher achievers, their scores were very elevated compared to what we typically see from them. All these scores were very elevated.
At the end of the year, how would, how do you gauge? How do you determine or ascertain the success of the students in all of that?
Grades in their classroom. We do use our state test. We won't use that test. When we had kneecaps, we used that. We used PSAT results. We use, um, SAT results. And last year, I believe, we even did ready steps. So we had three years of high school results to look at kids to see if they were consistent. And the other thing that you look for is, if this is the way they're testing, what are they getting in the classroom for a grade? So if they're getting a 96 in the classroom for a grade and they're testing in reading comprehension at substantially below proficient, there's something wrong with what's going on. Either they can't take the test or the grades in the classroom have been out there. And those are all things that you look at when you, um, talk to teachers about grading and classroom practices. And those are all things that teachers look at very closely.
Thank you. Anyone else have questions? Oh, yes, Pat, please.
On it, um, because I was having a convenient time by having a month and struck more time essentially move away to teach the board this test. And the administration's test, and I'm going to need to you folks to decide whether that's really what you want to see, type of support, probably not. So when we get the test results back, they seemed to me to be far off what my expectations were then, given what I had working at quarter after quarter. In fact, year after year, we had these tests from my half month. And there was a disjuncture. So I pulled the S A T scores, which were given at the same time, and again, found that they didn't align. How to explain this? Because it seemed to me that the S A T scores aligned better with what classroom assessment demonstrated. And the only conclusion I can draw is that although the smarter balanced test was a rigorous test, it was not rigorous in school. It's soft scoring on hard test. So with all due respect to the designers of the test, it's fine to have a rigorous test, but if you're going to dip on it and have it do any way useful to the stakeholders, students, their parents, labor payers, communities, teachers, administrators, then you have to be, I suppose, bloodthirsty enough to be rigorous in your scoring of that instrument. If you really wanna use a rigorous test, you must score fairly, that's why you know. But this did not end good, it was people loss, and allowing you to remember how many years we spent looking at test results, trying to figure out what kids could do, what could they not possess, skills and content knowledge. Tried to remedy that, and this test did not get nothing back from the scores, and it's very bad. So I would say, thank you for arriving, good riddance to it.
I'm expensive.
The next round on the high stakes meeting will be something that understands the role of high stakes, has they been improving, uh, instruction and learning.
And just the, just the computer adaptive piece of it was huge. When you had this story that was on half the page, and you had questions that were on the other half of the page, but you can't see the whole story, so you're, you're scrolling up and down constantly on that page, trying to be on the answer page. It was, it was, it was awful.
And this is expected of third graders as well. Remember, they're just coming from second grade over to third grade. And trying to have them read the entire story while scrolling up and down, it was almost impossible. Very difficult. If we go this route, we really have to change our instructional strategies.
And our computer technology.
And our computer technology has to be much more intuitive and savvy.
You get to, you always hearing about the kids that, uh, do not test well, how do they figure into this?
Exactly the way you would expect. You can take a horse that, you know, a farmer that you take a horse to water, you can't make a drink. We have had several of those children, and I think the teachers here from elementary school can test it out. It was a very trying time, not only for them, but for the teachers and for me as well. Just trying to get information, sometimes I'd call and I'd be on hold for an hour. Um, we had some glitches with a couple of students that were kicked right off the test.
And it was a month.
Of testing.
Of testing. A month instructional time that we could have used.
And when we look at our D R A scores, which I mentioned to you at our last meeting, the D R A assessments, the star math, the star reading are much more aligned to the classroom assessments. And we can look at the, the data from those and recognize that these are the true scores that those children should have gotten, rather than something of this extent.
When are you expecting the announcement of what the state's gonna say is gonna replace the smarter balance?
The R F Ps are out, and I think they're doing it at the end of this month.
They do at the end of the month, um, there is a committee, um, I can't say who's on it, um, but it'll review those R F Ps. And, um, you know, the word I had, and I think I shared with you earlier, is looking at the Florida test, or looking at the Massachusetts test. For a while, we thought, yeah, the A C T is involved, we thought maybe some other tests might be, but it doesn't appear they're going to be involved. So it's gotta be again, and delivered via technology. It's gonna be a technology-based test, and are you gonna do it on computer? Results are supposed to come back fast, these didn't. These didn't come back any faster than, than it did this year. The return was supposed to be short, and that didn't happen.
The government likes Florida though, so.
Yeah, that's, that's a concern, that's definitely, but we'll see what they come out with. No one's been a no until Commissioner breaks the news, and the unfortunate part is the Commissioner's, uh, fell through his barn floor, has been injured, and he's out for a while. So the associate, associate Commissioner, temporary associate Commissioner, because we really don't have a Commissioner, then the temporary Commissioner.
Bruce Shaw.
Yeah. Yeah, so, uh, we're, we're down to the associate temporary Commissioner right now.
Anyone else? Thank you. Are you, do you have anything else, Patty, or Jane?
Jane does.
All right, Jane.
What I will say about our, um, data from, um, the standardized test is that in the past, we were beginning to have our students do well on literacy, on the reading sections, and we were working really hard with them, and we could see that they were steadily improving. Uh, so I hope we've had an opportunity to look at each of these and compare them to the state. We pretty much expected this was what was going to happen. Any questions on those? Open house last week, again, as in years past, lots of, um, people attended. October is anti-bullying month, we have some activities planned, we did have a speaker come in today to talk with the kids, and that was well received, and he did an excellent job. Progress reports are sent home on Friday. Um, so hopefully the parents get an idea of how their children are performing in that first five weeks of school, as well as the kids themselves getting adjusted to how they need to be doing better if they need to do so. On October the thirteenth, the elementary teachers will be going to Matisias. We are beginning to, um, get into the standard-based instructions, so hopefully this will at least give us a basic understanding of what direction we need to go in.
This is a, a grant that the Washington County Superintendent.
Costs us nothing.
Doesn't cost us anything. We've got, uh, five years of twenty thousand dollars for teacher development, and we're doing some of that work together. To get you out of the conflict with either in Dallas or in Matisias.
I did attend the gifted and talented workshop last week. Interesting enough, um, since I am the administrator, I can get about seventeen or eighteen thousand dollars as part of my salary, which means that I might be spending two thousand dollars left in the budget for the festival work. I did ask for an extension on the application because I really wanted to review it. I don't wanna have to have it sent back to me to redo again, so it was a very beneficial workshop. And if you'd like to review a copy of that G T application right then, maybe you can help me out.
Doesn't matter how well you do, typically, they'll send it back at least once. I think they've reopened some of the, other time of ones, three or four times.
I asked, I asked that that be done, the application, because they didn't like the way I worded the, um, performance report outcome, so I had to go back and use some of the jargon that they wanted me to say, which
They, they couldn't read, they couldn't read.
No, they actually will send you the jargon they want you to use.
Yes, she told me like to put down, so I went, okay, I'll do it.
If I offered to help, it would probably slow you down.
Uh, seriously, it, it.
Wow.
It is what it is.
It is what it is, but we'll take their money when they send it to us. Any questions?
All right, that concludes the administrative reports. Um, old business.
Okay, uh, you have in your packet the job descriptions, um, we sat down, we've gone over those. Um, and pretty in a number of changes that were suggested. We made some language a little bit from suggestions, but I think we got everything, um, covered in them. Which one would you like to start with for a review process? I, it's stapled together probably in your package in mine, or, but we can start anywhere you'd like. Top, the first one I've got is a Woodland Elementary teaching principal. Wanna start with that, or run down to the right? Yeah, it's just stapled up in the upper left, just pulling out. There's no significant changes to this particular one, we did make a few wording adjustments, but other than that, there's no significant changes. Um, there were some suggestions about some things that people, um, wanted added, and we kind of fit those in with the statements that were pretty much there, but the job goal obviously is leadership and administrative skills to achieve and maintain the best possible skills and development for each student, and oversee the day-to-day operations of the school. He, uh, includes general management, discipline, attendance, records, reporting, oversees implementation of all programs. And that's listed out, including schedules a day for classes, if that meets students' instructional needs, school community relations, communication skills, effectively working with students, staff, parents, and community, fire drills, emergency preparations, and we're also required to do lockdown drills now as well, as a result of the last legislative session. Seems responsible for interpretation of student staff board policies and administrative procedures, prepare, submit budgetary reports, monitor expenditures and larger funds, represent the school in the budget process, manages day-to-day needs of staff, relieves, ensuring substitute coverage when appropriate, staff meetings, uses of the, uh, P L C, that's the Professional Learning Committee. Attends board meetings, administrative meetings, attends open houses, parent-teacher conferences, school concerts, additional school-based community events, and there are a number of those throughout the year as well. Other duties in the task, that's the one I like best, as assigned by the superintendent. And, uh, and now it's the Title One students, program design, evaluation, building staff, responsible for Title One grant application, performance report. Professional development committee prepares workshop agendas, provides professional help for staff, manages after-school program. And that's forms, schedules, payments, time cards, and reporting. And attends professional workshops to keep up to date, um, and, uh, teaching shall be assigned, uh, teaching component by the superintendent, and that's been through Title One, may change in the future depending on who may be in the position. Then there's legal and ethical duties, terms of employment, to be worked here to be stepped by the board, performance by the superintendent. And walks on water, and comes sore with eagles.
Couple of questions or comments.
Sure.
Could these bullet orders be numbered so that they resemble all of the other
Yeah.
job descriptions that would make it easier for reference?
Yep.
Could also, um, under the qualifications, it's required that an elementary school, that that person have a teaching experience. Could we say that would be preferred? Because we may get a person that goes into my position next year that doesn't have elementary experience.
Mine says prefer.
It says prefer, Jane.
Says prefer.
There. Oh, I put it in there.
And it got added.
It got added.
You were confusing me.
Yeah, me too. Me too.
Yes, I see, but on the original one, it didn't have preferred, and that's what I'm looking at, all right.
I got it in.
Look at yours.
I got it in.
You had us all when I was going.
I have a question on what professional learning community meetings are.
Yep, oh, within, go ahead, Jane.
Professional learning communities, uh, the teachers volunteer their time to, let's say, do a book study, or focus on a particular topic that they can go back and implement within the classroom. And before they do that, they get, uh, the blessing of this superintendent, who probably will say it's okay to go ahead and buy a certain book, et cetera, et cetera. But it's initiated by the teachers themselves, it's not something that I would say you have to be part of this.
Now, if we had a teacher who had poor evaluation, who had an improvement plan, then, on the other hand, we might say you will be a part of this, as a part of the improvement plan. So it goes both ways.
Any others?
Yeah.
Would make sense maybe just, I'll make sure it's clear. Since I've got a one and a two here, these are the two letters.
I assume you have that standard.
Yeah, okay, that's what I assumed, I double checked.
Standard outline. Yep.
I already did it, but wanted to make sure I wasn't wrong. Okay, then, go ahead.
On the other, uh, second page.
Yep.
Delivers Title One to programmed students.
Yep.
Uh, would it be possible, I understand there are emergencies, but it would be possible to put in a percentage of the time? Because we wanna ensure that those students are serviced, I imagine there are requirements?
Delay on my application, I have to specify the time, and that's fifty percent of my time.
Would it be appropriate to include that?
Sure, you may, and.
I mean, because this is just for this year anyway, it probably is gonna have to be.
Well, that's what I'm, I'm concerned, rather than put it in. We know what time is, and it's tied to the grant, but as we go forward.
We don't know.
We don't know.
Right.
Six of one, half dozen the other, I guess.
Yeah, and you'll have to change them.
Yeah, you, you'll have to change it, I'm sure, to some extent, as we go forward, depending on whom a replacement might be.
I need to, something clarified on that, this, um, Title One program is, takes fifty percent of your administrative time?
Yep, half of my salary is paid by the Title One program.
Okay, and the other half is principal slash whatever?
Yeah.
Slash everything else included.
Um, I do have to talk about the after-school program, the daycare. That takes a lot of time. I have to do the billing, I have to call parents, remind them sometimes that you may have to pay for a month, and sometimes I get black from parents when I do that. I also have to, some parents ask if I would give them the number of hours, the number of pay that they have given me, given the school for the year, so that they can use it for their income tax purposes. It is a lot of work for it. And there are some times that parents, well, one parent moved away and left the over a hundred dollar bill.
Are you looking to delegate this to someone already in the system, or hiring a new hire, or what's your?
No, I have, right now, there are two people that are really dedicated to the hourly part of the program. I'm just letting you know that this particular, uh, component is time-consuming.
As, as, I think what Jane is saying, as we go forward in the next year,
Right.
um, depending on whom might replace Jane, it's gonna be a consideration, I'm sure, as to where that job responsibility needs to fall.
And we have to be careful when we say we want to pay somebody extra. Remember, the parents pay for this program itself sufficiently, because nothing, uh, nothing is taken from the school's budget to help this particular program.
So you're gonna wanna give that some consideration as we go forward. Okay?
What time of day does that? What time of day does that program end?
Five thirty, two thirty to five thirty.
And how many students do we have in it?
We have some days nine, and some days we have fifteen. They come and they go.
Yep.
What was the low number?
Nine.
Nine?
Nine. I'm sure it fluctuates with parents' work schedule.
Absolutely.
Because a lot of people get part-time work, it's not full-time, they don't know what day they're gonna work.
Anything else? Okay, um, I guess we'll.
Assistant to the principal, elementary.
Could we do mine next? I have private grad meetings at seven o'clock.
Oh, yeah, we can. Get back, uh.
Sorry.
Okay, real quick, I'll, I'll do this quick, but I'll just set that one over so I know I'm going back. Okay, um, I believe based on some of the input, Patty and I will go down through and add in those additional discussions that we had. I just, I think if I had a chance to read it, um, just simply open it up for discussion.
I added in all of Elaine and Glenn's, they were identical, so, um, we added all those ones in with the exception of, um, giving advisors monthly bill statements because that's a stipend position, that's not a job of the principal. That's whoever holds the treasury position, so if the principal doesn't hold the treasury position, that's not their job.
Well, we put it in the activities coordinator's position. We had a request for that to be.
But he's not the treasurer.
He's not the treasurer.
No, but he, whoever the treasurer is, he would get statements from the treasurer to give to the coordinators.
Here and it can't, it can't be there.
Yeah, well, it was just double to make sure it got done.
Other than that, everything else is somewhere within that two-mile-long list. Except for walking on water and sore with eagles.
Assistant to the principal.
All right.
Now, there's.
This is the elementary?
There's, I was gonna say, there's two, right?
First one is back one page from where you just went.
See Patty will be done after this?
Yep.
Yeah, so let's do Patty's first and then she can take care of business. And, does anyone have any questions about it? Anyone had a chance to read it?
I tried to put in it exactly what she does do for a team or whoever's in the position. This is currently held by somebody here, so this is what they actually do.
I'm happy with it. You?
No.
No? Okay, fire away.
Um. I have a, I know it's just a difference of opinion or philosophy. I don't feel that the guidance office is the place for the disciplinarian in the school. Because I feel that the guidance counselor should be the person that a student feels like they can go to, uh, for counseling, and, uh, that's a, a safe place for them. I just don't feel that guidance and discipline go hand in hand. And, uh, I've, I've talked to several guidance counselors at, at several different schools. I talked to the, the dean at the main school, math and science. Uh, I talked to a, a former superintendent and I, uh, was looking for some guidance when I said, and, and I asked them their opinion on, uh, you know, does the disciplinarian in a school, does it belong in the guidance office? Should they, they be the one to deal with the discipline for students? And, and they all felt absolutely not. You know, I, I talked to a former guidance counselor from here, Doug Richardson, and he just felt like they were, the two things do not go hand in hand. They are almost opposite. Kids feel like they need to, to go to somebody to talk to and they're not going to, uh, wanna confide in the one who's dishing out the discipline. So the two.
But this doesn't, this doesn't specify who's doing it.
Can I?
This is just a job description. This is just a job description, it doesn't really say who's, who does it, right? Who's responsible?
Correct.
Well, I don't know.
So, I mean, I know that it's in the hands of the guidance counselor right now, but this doesn't say where it goes in the future or anything, so.
It's a stipend position that we opened up, and when we opened it up last time, probably still Patty's words right now. And no one wanted to do it. No one jumped forward and wanted to do it. And in reality, follows the only person who didn't want to do it, who said, fuck, no one else will do it, I'll do it for you. Bottom line.
And we can, um, we can address that at the next meeting as to, you know, what everyone feels, who should be doing this? I don't know, I think just in the interest of time tonight that we should either, um, accept or reject this job description, but not really specify who's doing it.
Correct.
All right, but.
Could I respond to what you said though, because I don't want to lose this and wait until the next minute meeting? We had the same concerns, very much concerned about how does guidance, um, provide students with guidance in a safe place to be and still have the guidance counselor be the assistant to the principal? Um, unless I am out of the building, the guidance counselor disciplines no one.
No one.
And even when I am out of the building, unless she absolutely has to suspend somebody because they brought alcohol to school, which was a situation that she had to take care of, um, she saves whatever has to be done for me when I come back the next day. She deals with the situation at hand, I take care of the discipline. She does have the students in detention. And we wondered about that, we said, you know, let's see how it works. And I don't know how it works in other towns or cities or with other guidance counselors, but I will tell you that that has been one of the most positive experiences that we have had. Because the students who are frequent flyers in detention have formed very close relationships with this, um, with our guidance counselor. Um, she has got them into, uh, jobs that they're doing. She's got one kid doing an apprenticeship now because she knows so much about him and what he wants to do. I mean, having detention in that office has not been negative for these kids. It has been a very positive experience. I can't see one student, I can't list one student who says, I'm not going to her. I don't wanna go to her, I don't wanna talk to her. In fact, our frequent flyer students in detention are typically our frequent flyer students who wanna go to the guidance office just to talk. So, I, I, I know that you've talked to other people and I know other schools and whatnot, but I know in Woodland, Maine, at Woodland High School, it has been one of the best experiences we have had, and I am as surprised as anybody else about it, but it has been a very positive experience.
So, but overall, you're the, you're the person that
I do all the discipline, yes. And I'm pretty good, we don't need to discipline.
God, they are pretty good.
Right, Chris?
Any other?
Yes.
Go ahead.
My other issue with this is that, uh, like you said, Bill, it's a, a stipend position. I know when all the stipend positions were, uh, set up, it was the intention that time of the board, it was the understanding of the teachers that stipend positions are for work done outside of their regular duties of their day. And if this person is acting as the assistant to the principal in monitoring student attendance, uh, working with the school secretary for investigative actions, assuming responsibility for monitoring of students and, uh, corresponding with parents about attendance, that is not how a stipend is supposed to be working.
For the most part, her, her duties are between the two-thirty and four o'clock, except, obviously, if Patty's out of the building, then that duty is during the school day and a little bit different. She's actually doing double duty, I guess.
But that, but that two-thirty to four o'clock is monitoring discipline. It's detention, and she's not doing attendance at that time.
Yes, she is, she's writing parent, she's writing notes to parents, she's signing the papers that the secretary have given her, she's keeping the chart that we keep on, on our dismissals, how many absences, how many excused. Does this parent need a letter? What, are we at the letter phase? Are we at the parent meeting phase? Are we at the superintendent phase? All that is done after hours.
The record keeping is done at that point.
Well, I think you've got an acrobat because I don't see how attendance materials can all be done after school. I just, I, I, I really have to question that.
The, the attendance is done, I mean, I give an attendance report first thing in the morning, just as soon as it's up on Power School, I get an email with the attendance list on it from both buildings. At that point, that list is, is derived and, and anybody who has met the requirements of having to have additional response is formulated and sent, but not dealt with until the end of the day when she has time. And, and her time at that point is, as Patty just said, to check back. At what point are we with this child? Is it time for detention? Is it time for a letter? Is it time for our parent meeting? Is it time for some other action? Those decisions are made outside of her guidance time. The only guidance time that would get impacted is, like I said, when Patty's out of the building, she's still doing her guidance, but may be called, called to the office to respond to a phone call or an incident or a need of a teacher. But that's a, call the office, take care of the situation, get back to what you're doing.
Attendance reports are on every Friday, and the secretary outlines who is getting a letter that didn't get a letter at the last Friday that they ran in attendance book reports, so who has moved up in the, um, spectrum. And she runs off our typical model attendance record. And then those go to, um, the assistant principal, and it could be anybody, it doesn't have to be Paula. If they go, that goes to her, she tracks it on her tracking sheet. Um, she writes on each and every one of the letters what that means to that student, um, who has been out. Um, she makes sure those are filed, and then we have a policy where at four absences, parents are called, at six absences, this is done, at eight absences, this is done, at ten absences, this is done. So she has to follow whatever stage that student is at.
Well, we, uh, we should actually, if we're gonna discuss this, Paula should be here, I suppose. I think that's only fair and right.
Well, it's a job description, it's not about her, it's about the job description and then.
Understood.
And then whoever does that job has to do that, but we're still trying to take care of a job description for, for the position. Right now Paula's doing it, there's no assurance that she may be doing it next year or
Right.
anytime in the future.
Right, but I do remember when, um, we discussed it at one of the previous meetings that, um, when I asked her if the time that she was utilizing for the assistant to the principal could be better utilized, um, for guidance, I think her answer was a, a yes, but, but he.
It probably could be, but somebody's gotta do it, you know?
Right, well, you know, that's, I guess, I'm not saying one way or the other.
She's such a stressed.
Who's gonna be doing it, I'm, I'm just saying that.
Yeah.
We're all stressed, I mean, we're all working above what we should be working, but.
We can.
Way like this.
We can, uh, I don't know.
Mr. Ripley has a question.
Do you wanna table it to the?
Yeah, oh, we don't have to decide tonight, right.
Well, the question is whether or not the job description is appropriate.
Right.
Not whether or not the individual's.
That's clearly the right answer. Yes, Carl?
I, I'm confused, are we deciding on the job description whether or not we want the job or whether or not Paula's fit for the job? That's, that, because if we're just voting on the job description, I think that that can happen now. I think that's what we're doing, if we're deciding whether or not we want that position, that should've been decided before the job description. If we're deciding whether or not Paula's unfit for the time it's taking.
I have to interrupt, we're not even going there.
What I'm asking from here is, if we're trying to decide that Paula can't do it because of school hours and stuff, it's gonna be another teacher, it's gonna be the same exact vote, because you can't hire Joe Schmo off of Street because of HURKAL laws. So it's gonna be a teacher one way or the other, it's gonna be the same exact position.
Yes, but please don't be, um, don't misunderstand our direction here. It's clearly just the job description and nobody, no person's involved.
Right.
This isn't a ref, that's, yeah, we're going to, yeah, we're going to. But just, I don't want that to get out there, that, you know, this is clearly not where we're headed.
Paula, no, I just wanted to clarify the case of what.
And, uh, you know, I, I think someone mentioned maybe even the extracurricular, co-curricular person might have the, you know, might be able to do it, willing or not willing or, you know, just throwing ideas out there, that's all, but, no, this is clearly just the job description and if we ever have to cross that bridge, um, we'll do it.
You do have to have some qualifications to do this.
Yeah, I understand that.
I have a, a question, that how important is, are the attendance records? I mean, what are, what are done with them? I know on our level, but what, what about attendance and where it goes outward from here? And how is it done? And what do we, what do we get out of it? I mean, in other words, does Augusta, does Augusta care if we have attendance records?
Augusta cares a whole lot.
That's what I, that's what I wanna hear about.
And the truth of the matter is.
That's what I wanna know.
To a point where, um, a percentage of attendance could impact, or a low percentage of attendance or a high percentage of absenteeism could affect the dollars that you receive from Augusta for countable children. So yes, it's important.
Okay.
Adequate yearly progress.
Adequate yearly progress, yeah.
Okay, so then, I guess it boils down to then, uh, should an assistant to the principal or any other person besides the principal be responsible for this? If it's that important to us, if it means our, our dollars and adequate yearly progress and, and all of that, I mean, how important is it?
If they are trained to do the position, it was easy to do, it's time-consuming, it's easy. And, and I, I guess I gotta say this. You can put it in my job description to make me do it, but I'm telling you right now, with everything that's been added to my plate and checking to make sure the bleachers are in the right place and checking to make sure the lines are done, there is no more to add. I cannot get out of my office, you guys wanna know how I'm evaluating teachers. You wanna know what's going on in the classroom. You wanna know what instructional strategies are being taken care of and what we're doing for proficiency-based learning. If I can't get in the classroom, I cannot do those things. And you can ask my own teachers how often they have seen me in the classroom since the start of the school year this year. You can only put so much on the plate.
Well, the bleachers and the line does somebody else's job.
Yeah, but they have to come through me. You guys have made that very clear, that I am the one that is in charge to make sure that that gets done. So I still have to deal with those issues. Check noise.
All right.
I'm sorry, but I just had to say that because I don't know how much more you can add on.
Yeah.
I, I think if it, I think if it came to doing attendance and keeping track of people doing lines and stuff, I would do the attendance, I would, I, if I were you, I would choose the attendance over the.
But if it came between doing attendance and making sure kids are properly being educated in the classroom, my jaw. in the classroom, my job is to make sure our students are educated to the best of our ability. That's my job.
Anyway.
Yeah, moving on. Getting sidetracked here. Um, if people, if the board members are okay with the job descriptions and we can adopt them tonight?
I moved to adopt all the, the way they're written. Do them, do them one by one.
You can do it as a group or you do it one by one? Just have a way? All right, I got his motion to adopt.
We haven't been the assistant principal of the elementary.
What's that?
No, we haven't.
You're cor- that's right. Sorry. Geez, I almost forgot about you, Jane. I almost get away with it.
No, it's not Jane's. It's the assistant.
Assistant.
Right behind Jane.
Table's at.
No, but it's her school, as we're referring to.
And that's pretty simple. It's, um, not as, as, as quite as involved, obviously, as, as the high school level. And so the stipend is obviously already listed in there, but that's what was agreed upon. And it is, for the most part, in absence of the principal, having some additional responsibilities.
Looks fine.
Again, can we number them?
Yeah, we can.
For both assistant principal positions.
Sure.
Any questions? Comments on that? Assistant to the elementary school principal? All right, Crystal.
Now you got a motion to adopt. Give you a second.
Uh, be specific. Just.
Do you wanna go one by one?
No, just do, just mention it in the motion, which, which ones we're accepting.
Make a motion to pass the job descriptions I've written.
Okay, for the elementary school principal, high school principal, assistants to the principal.
Correct.
Yeah. Second? Well, seconded. Any more discussion? All in favor of the motion? Alan, not in favor? You abstaining?
I'm abstaining.
Okay.
Two, one, and one abstention. Am I right?
Two, four.
Two, four, one against.
One against.
And one extension.
So it's a tie. Right?
That's all.
Abstention is a no.
Yeah. Abstention is a no.
So it's a tie. We'll bring it to the full board next time around, I guess.
Why don't we go one at a time and see if we can get some of these passed? I, just a suggestion.
Yeah, well, I'm not interested in that. Um, what's everybody else think?
Next time.
Next time, okay.
Hold, hold forward. That's why there's five.
Move forward. Okay. Well, thank you, uh, by the way, for doing these. I know it's.
Thank you, Patty.
All right.
All right, policies.
All right.
Number twelve.
In your packet, I've sent you what are required policies and I'll get to that in a minute. But I also, one of the policies we don't have is actually a process for adopting policies. And I think MSMA was pretty specific, specific about process. And basically, it's a process used unilaterally, not only in this state, but across the United States for boards to adopt policies.
This the BFC bill?
This is BFC.
Okay.
Correct. Um, you're a legislative body, which determines a policy for the Bay Harbor School Department. Policies are written, which express a will and a plan of the board. And I won't read the whole thing, but policies are revised, added to, amended, deleted at regular and special meetings of the board by a majority of the board of the members. To allow for public input, first reading and second readings of proposed policies or amendments will occur in consecutive meetings. And then in the first meeting, it's only a motion to put it down the table. And the second meeting is actually a vote, a motion for a vote. That permits you time and the public time and anybody else that might impact time to read, review. There's two weeks in between in order to, uh, make comments or come to the board and voice their comments about the policy. First meeting, reading is for information, discussion, uh, to share with the agenda. And the second meeting is actually for adoption, rejection, or revision if so needed. So, um, amendments of the policy at the action state will not require repetitiveness in the sequence unless the board so directs. And, uh, in the case of an emergency, because you have to have it right away, you can dispense with it. Um, sometimes there are emergency situations that come up and you may need to, to deal with that.
Time constraints.
The Rs are the regulations that go with it. Um, some Rs, regulations are required by law and you'll see some of those as we go forward through the process. And if you look at the required policy, you'll notice that there are some Rs as a part of the required policy list. Student discrimination and harassment complaint has a procedure that's required by law as its discrimination and harassment complaint for employees, as its tobacco use, as is down further drug and alcohol testing and so on. There's a process that is required and stated, so we put those in policy. That's basic to what it is. Any questions on that?
Let's see, um, where's the policy that preceded this?
We didn't have one.
There was no policy?
No. I'm not sure how they did it. There's none anywhere in the books.
Hmm. Okay.
Maybe I missed, who develops the policies?
Typically, the superintendent does a study, develops a policy, uh, according to law, according to requirements, presents it to the board. Board can make adjustments to it, uh, comments to it. Public hasn't that chance. Teachers have a chance or so. And then it goes into a final draft and is accepted or rejected. Maybe James amended.
But MSBA, when they were here, there's a code that you can get. They have recommended policies or samples of policies.
Yeah, yeah.
And people can look at their policies too.
They recommend their policies highly because they're updated regularly and meet the instances of the law. There may be some small adaptations that a local unit might want to make that wouldn't break the law, but be more aligned with the way that unit, um, we operate differently here than they would in Portland, for instance, as a board. Difference in size. Okay? The next one, um.
So if time, if time constraints, if there are time constraints, so.
Yeah, that covers it right there.
Yeah.
Okay. The, the other thing I'm, how about, I have this great idea for a policy and I call it Crystal and say, what do you think? And she calls up somebody else and the three of us decide that's what we want for a policy.
You give me the information, I'll write it into a draft, make sure that meets the letter of the law.
But we don't vote on it at the next meeting?
No. You have to have, you have time for public input. Or if it affects the contract, obviously for staff input or union input, then you can do it. If it's an emergency situation, you can go around that. But if it breaks the law or does something else, you pay the consequences.
What are the consequences? What are the consequences?
Uh, could be a prohibited practice suit against you. It could be, for the most part, be a lawsuit of some kind. Uh, if they affected the contract, a prohibited practice lawsuit.
Okay.
Feel like, wanna think about this for a while? You wanna?
You, you, what you do is you, you put it on for first reading when I'm all done.
Yep.
You just, and all I need is a motion for first reading.
Yeah.
Okay?
Oh, Lisa.
Sorry. Does this affect, um, the policy that was made last week on co-curricular job descriptions? Would you have to draft the policy?
No. No.
Because that does affect, uh, union members. That's gonna affect our curriculum and our stipends and things like that. I was just wondering if that affects how it was done.
No, not at this point. This is sort of after the fact.
So starting from now on, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Trying to get it clear and.
Well, it's gonna start from, it's gonna start from the date that it's adopted.
Adopted, correct.
A couple of meetings or next meeting.
Yeah.
Excuse me.
Yes, Patty.
Just for information, in years past, I know there was a problem with a student and athletic policy, something to do with sport. And a group of parents, a couple of people got together, came to the board and the board had to set up a different policy. And it took, it took enough time so that the student could not play because the season was over by the time that the policy was.
Adopted, changed.
So it, it's been like that for years.
Yeah. And this isn't yours. It's, it's a process. It's like any other legislative motion by the legislature. It all goes through a review process and then adoption or vote.
So any.
And apparently there's, the policies that the board has operated or that various boards have operated under, over the decades have been lost or thrown out or something because we're finding right now, Patty, that most every, everything that we do is, there's no, there's no prior. All these policies, yeah, it's.
Or.
It's unexplainable, really.
Or it hasn't been done anything to since nineteen ninety-eight.
Last, last reviews, for the most part, in the policy book in ninety-seven, ninety-eight, might be a couple O-two's in there, but that's about it. And we're way beyond that. Originally, and, and I'm not gonna go back, and the point of when the AOS was formed within the AOS guidelines, boards were going to go through the AOS and everybody was gonna have the same policy. That didn't happen. Uh, Princeton has their policies. Lee Sad 30 has their policies. And there are a dozen, maybe, AOS policies that were passed unilaterally by everybody. I've got those and I'll bring those forward as we go through the process. So, and they'll be pretty common since everybody's using MSBA for a guideline, for a guideline. So I don't think they'll be significantly different unless it has something to do with that particular system that might be different from the other. So we're gonna be pretty close to what the guidelines thought we should add. That's the good news.
So if we, if we called this the first reading, anything that we would like to see changed?
You can do it next reading?
We can do it next reading?
Exactly. Yeah, that's the idea. Okay. If I can go on, the other one, um, that we had, that we had some discussions about, but was not in policy, would be GBE, just discussed here a minute ago, was the hiring policy for co-curricular positions. I think I've got everything in there that you had a discussion about in the process of fulfilling those positions. Um, I can, I'll read through those.
No, no, you don't have to read it.
So that's there for you. And that follows, I think.
That was, uh.
The notes were absolutely correct, but, but I took from the meeting.
Yeah.
Question vote number four.
Go ahead.
Um, but, and, and maybe I missed this in the discussion. You've got people who will be on the interviews. Uh, wasn't a school board member included?
Sorry, yes, it should be. I can add that, certainly.
Okay, that was my only question.
Good call, Elaine. Yeah, I missed that one.
I took it for granted.
I mean, that's if they choose, but.
I took it for granted. Well, yeah, it's, it's up to them. I mean, and.
Right.
I'll add that, but for the next reading and, and.
Well, this was actually adopted on the twenty-second. This is, we actually made, we made a decision.
Yeah, you actually did, but I put it in.
So you can put that adopted as September twenty-second of two thousand fifteen. Cause we did vote to do that immediately.
Yes, you did.
Okay.
But I tried to put it in a written format, actually, going, and I'll, I'll change that and add school board. Anything else that I may have missed, and I'll just set that one aside and take care of it. Okay?
No, that's, I think it's pretty accurate.
All right, thank you. Try. And then last, a question came up and I haven't done a policy for you, but will write the policy for you, was a question about purchasing policy. And what, uh, you have the DJ policy, which was the nineteen ninety-eight was the last time that it was reviewed, brand new. Um, the only really suggested changes, if you look at, and I gave an MSBA recommended policy, you'll note that, um, there's a bidding process in there. And there's also, um, a significant difference in.
Numbers.
What you bid in numbers. And I guess what I'm looking for is before I draft it and bring it back for first reading, some input from you. So the only one we really have for first reading is the very first one that I went through. This one I'll bring back for first reading at the next meeting, but I just needed some direction before I draft it.
I have a couple of things that I wanna throw to the other board members. And under, um, the fourth, the fourth paragraph.
First, yes.
Where it begins, where bidding is not required by law, I would like to, um, lower that twenty thousand dollar amount to, you know, considerably lower. And, uh, under A, above that, bidding required by law, um, how do the other board members feel about, uh, putting the fuel out to bid on a yearly basis? And the other thing was, oh, if, the fifth paragraph that begins, if competitive bidding is not utilized, that, that ten thousand dollar number be reduced considerably. And, and I'm just throwing that out there for the other members to think about, see what they come up with. Other than that, I'm fairly confident that this is, will work for us.
I think that we should put our fuel out to bid.
I know someone will disagree. But, um, we can think about this.
I can bring it back for the next meeting and.
The next meeting or people can, uh, come up with their own ideas as to numbers that they want.
I've got a question.
I do want you to realize what the chair just said. Remember what costs are today when we think about a figure. Um, if we were to buy ten computers, I'd be beyond that unless I invoiced each computer separately and did ten invoices. If I had to, um, purchase a set of textbooks for science for multiple grades, I will be over an amount very quickly at over a hundred dollars per textbook.
We can exclude the textbooks and materials.
So the question is, um, as you make those numbers, how you wanna make them and to what they wanna cover. I thought what you're saying, but, um, just keep that in mind. That's all I'm asking. Um, decisions are made on a daily basis. And then there's the issue of the emergency ones. If I lose a section in a boiler like we did last year, that bill was ten thousand nine hundred dollars. It was in January. I couldn't wait two weeks for a board meeting or for a bid process. Bottom line, you wouldn't have had a building.
Can we write that like into, since this is the first reading, can we write that into such a way that if it is an extreme emergency and a time.
Time sensitive?
Time sensitive issue that it would authorize the superintendent?
And you'll find some policies that are written that way if you do your research real quick. I just, those are the issues that are not really there. And if we were, we just finished a board meeting tonight and I lost something large that I needed in place tomorrow, um, I can't wait two weeks for a decision. can't wait two weeks for a decision and then two weeks to, more to bid it, and then two weeks to, for the bids to come back in and open it, and two more weeks to get somebody here. And if I had to close a school down, you'd be in school until August next year.
Well, something to think about.
Yeah, just, those are the downsides to it.
A question about your thought on the fuel out to bid. I would think one of the advantages of being in an AOS would be schools working together to...
I'll tell you.
To ask for services. Have any of the towns worked together to get bids on things like fuel, though?
I actually go out to bid on the other side through a company that does it, that's actually a part of a state bond bank, and they do it for food. They go out to bid for most of the schools across the state. Interestingly enough, nobody in this area will bid it. In the other area, I had three bids. And in that particular area, CN Brown was the lowest, at 210, and this was back in April May last spring. Right now, I'd love to get a set price because it's significantly lower than that. I will say that during the course of last year, with the current supply, I paid about 40 cents less a gallon on this side of the district than I did on the other side of the district. So, I didn't argue too much about the price, both on fuel oil and on heating oil.
We, I remember the, the last joyride on the school committee, all, we did all the bidding for the fuel in July. Put it out in July when it was typically at its low point.
Let me, let me tell you something about the little market. There was a point in time, 15 years ago, maybe a little longer, where at the end of the heating season and end of June, fuel prices began to drop. And then all of a sudden, that moved from the end of June into July, and from the end of July into August. Then it moved into September and into November, and now it happens any time that there's a flat spot in the market where Japan industry goes down and it creates a world problem or a war breaks out in Iraq. You know what I'm saying?
A hurricane.
It's viable to that, and it's viable to another part, too. Sometimes the ships are stacked up in the harbor and can't get the oil off because the cracking companies aren't doing anything with it. They're not refining it. In other words, the price is driven not just by market use, but by how much oil they'll put on the market. Oil companies that are large don't make their money on the 10 cents a gallon that they make on delivery after paying their insurance costs for putting that stuff on the road in the tank. They make it by taking those dollars and buying futures. They're buying and selling futures on the market, and they have somebody hired to do that for their company. Doesn't matter whether it's CN Brown, the Camrose, or whatever did before they went down, or any of the other larger companies. They're buying and selling futures. And they accept their price based on that. And this year, interestingly enough, I thought prices were, were down back in February, and we went to a bid and accepted it. I held off because I waited for a board acceptance, didn't realize I could do it on the other side. It was a 214.9. Price the next week, when I got approval to accept a bid, went to 230, and I decided not to. I waited two months, rebid, and got it at 210, which was less than I would've got it the first time. If I'd waited three more months, I probably could've got it at $1.90, because I can have it delivered in Dangor right now at $1.79.9. So, there is no particular time of the year anymore. The time to do it is, you watch the market, you try to project with your crystal ball the best you can when you think it's gonna fall, when it's at its low point, you're gonna bid. And that's my job. And I watch the market, I got it on my computer, it runs constant.
All right, well, something, keep me back of our minds. Any other comments? All right.
Okay. So, if you would, I just need an approval to put DJ on for first reading, because that's the only one that would be effective at this point.
Yeah.
I just need a motion for that.
I make a motion.
That's all I need. Thank you.
Second?
You don't need a second, all you need is just a motion to get it on the table.
Oh.
Stays on the table till next meeting.
Oh, just to table it?
Yep. DJ. I'll show you how this works. There.
I guess, an update from the Billyville Planning Committee. Steve's not here. He got chosen, he's the chosen one for the chairman of that.
Him and Jamie both are co-chair.
And...
Co-chair?
The meeting, the next meeting is the, I believe, the 14th.
October 14th.
Which is the same day that the co-curricular eligibility meeting is gonna take place.
Yep.
Just an hour later, so.
Actually, that could change to the 3rd. Oh, wait a second, I can't remember what I said. Patty changed it, but I think originally it was the 14th. I think she changed it to the 13th. I could be wrong.
Me and you started at 4:30 instead of 6:00.
Right.
On the 14th?
On the 14th?
Yeah, that's what I got.
Me and October 14th.
Yep.
Meeting will start at 4:30.
So, the AOS meeting is gonna be starting at 5:30, that same day, so. Be some choices there to make.
We're gonna give you a thinking one and...
Run out, hold it in the same room, maybe?
4:30.
I think we're gonna be in the kitchen, aren't we? AOS. I think, because they have a planning, Billyville Planning Committee.
Oh, really?
I think so.
Wow, I didn't, I'm on that, I didn't know about that one.
Well, you, we'll have to run back and forth.
Welcome to my life.
Somebody, I don't know.
Welcome to my life.
Somebody said that.
All right, I guess that's it. Motion to adjourn?
Nope.
No? Oh, hold up.
I have a question about when we're gonna get to this five-year maintenance plan.
Take us a little while to put it together. We're working on it. Sherman has been pretty active in trying to keep a list of things we need to adjust or do. Call it and laugh some things behind that I had before that I pulled back up again. This'll be a first run, Ed, I'm not just sure that it'll be all-inclusive for you, but it'll at least give you a...
Something.
Something, yeah.
What I discussed previously, too, is as we look at that and think about, and get to the budget side of it, I think it would be valuable to you as a board, no matter which way you go in the future, to make sure that you automatically, within your budget, set a significant amount of dollars aside for annual repair maintenance. Then, from your list, you prioritize what you'll get done. Hopefully, you'll look at things like energy conservation is maybe higher, safety is high on the list, those kinds of things, and then go through those backside. The issue, obviously, with not doing annual maintenance and keeping it a priority is that at some point in time, it becomes a balloon payment, like the paving. That was a balloon paving. So, that's, and in that same process, we often do the same thing for, for, like, majority of classrooms, furniture. You've got X number of classrooms. If you started to replace one classroom per year, my guess is it would take you 40 years to replace all the classroom furnitures. And today, given the construction of it, it won't last for 40 years.
How about checking the furniture at the Robinson School and see how new they have?
I, I think we, we have to look at options, yeah, but I'm just saying, that if you don't set within your budget priorities, some dollars aside saying, we'd like to look at furniture, what needs to be replaced, and make sure that on an annual basis, you take care of some of that. Otherwise, again, you can end up with some kind of a negative number at some point that's gonna be larger than you can handle and no way to get to where you wanted to. So, the five-year maintenance plan or even a 10-year maintenance plan, and it'll be continued. You'll do a five-year maintenance plan now, and next year you'll adjust that five-year maintenance plan, back to a five-year maintenance plan, and some things will move to the top and some will move to the bottom. That's gotta be an annual review.
In, in the past, the Jim Roof has always been a problem. They've tried to set aside money that was in a maintenance plan that was...
Right now, it's, last time it was done, I guess, it's held pretty well, the dome part of it, but we do have some facts that's in this room, but sometime in the next five years, it's gonna have to be a single part. Lot of it left to do. And at the elementary school, I mean, it's, it's pretty easy to pick out some of the things that are right in front of you, and just lay the windows, because they're falling out of the canes.
Do you like the list right now?
Huh?
Do you like the list right now?
Yeah, but we've got some outside doors, a significant number of outside doors on that building that are rotten off of frames.
I'm laughing because...
The bottom are gone.
The lobby door, a few years, a few years ago, it was just standing. It was gone off the frame. It was just there.
And, as I shared earlier, too, Chair, we, I just received a grant information that came out of the board, and I expect we're gonna see some more. But it basically was under a bullying process, but covers things like half of it that go towards transportation for cameras and those lines that go on the front of the buses so kids have to walk around. And the other half for, within the school, to provide for safety and eliminate bullying, like cameras. And our camera system is going downhill fast, I mean, to be replaced at some point in time. So, I'm going to put in, whether we get it or not, but my guess is for some of those safety things, given the most recent occurrence in Oregon, that we'll see some additional safety dollars coming forward, either federally or nationally from other sources. Anytime that there's an event like that, it's significant, we usually see an influx. So, hopefully, we'll be able to cover some of those things with grant dollars.
So, some of those cameras that go on the buses, did you say, too?
That's what we're looking at. I'll be putting in, met with the person today, basically, there's two cameras per bus, we've got six buses, take 12 cameras, plus the download system. He's gonna price it out, I'll put it into the grant, have that grant outside of 15, it's still under 31. That's my work plan.
That's a five-year maintenance plan. Gotta start somewhere.
Working on it. I'll get it for you.
Motion to adjourn?
Sure.
When's the next meeting?
Yeah.
When's the next meeting?
What'd we say?
Two weeks from today.
Yeah, 20...
It's the week of the conference, I believe. Should be like the 21st?
That's right, it's a Tuesday before the conference, right.
So, I got a motion from Gwen. See if I get this right. Second from Elaine.
How in favor?
At 7:15. And it's unanimous.